Great, thanks George. Okay, before we kick off the meeting, again, the governor's order on August 21st, 2020, Governor J.B. Pritzker again declared pursuant of Section 7 of the Illinois Emergency Management Agency Act 20ILCS 3305/7 that a disaster exists in Illinois as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. As such, per SB 2135 recently passed by the General Assembly, I, as the Mayor of Lamont, in accordance with the aforementioned Declaration of Emergency by the Governor, finds that it is not practical or prudent to have an in-person meeting tonight. Additionally, for the record, this meeting is being conducted via the Zoom virtual platform. Notice of same was given to the public and at least one person. In this case, our village administrator, along with myself, Ken and Charlene, are present at Village Hall as is required by the newly amended act. So with that being said, I'd like to call the January 25th Board Meeting to order. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
All right, great. Charlene, you want to take role, please?
Okay, this evening, we're starting with Trustee Stapleton. Absent.
Here, he's here.
Oh, he is here, okay. Okay, I didn't hear anything. Kittredge, here. Kozneski?
Here.
Maher? Maher?
Here.
McLafferty?
Here.
Snigowski?
Here.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, consent agenda. We have the approval of minutes for the December 4th Special Village Board Meeting. We have the December 14th Village Board Meeting Minutes. We also have the December 21st Village Board Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. We also, on the consent agenda, have the approval of disbursements. We have an ordinance O-01-21 amending the Lamont Municipal Code, Chapter 5.04, Section 5.04.060.B for alcoholic beverages. We're decreasing the number of Class C1 and C5 liquor licenses. We have an ordinance O-02-21 authorizing the sale and disposal of surplus equipment. We have an ordinance O-03-21 approving First Amendment to Parcel A Real Estate Purchase and Sale Agreement with BSTB Midwest LLC. In addition to that, we have an ordinance O-04-20 approving the First Amendment to Parcel B Real Estate Purchase and Sale Agreement with BSTB Midwest LLC. And we have ordinance O-05-20 approving Amendment to Parcel C with on the Real Estate Purchase and Sale Agreement, again with BSTB Midwest LLC. I need a motion for the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee McLafferty, seconded by Trustee Stapleton to approve the consent agenda. Any questions or comments by the trustees on the consent agenda? Okay, Charlene, roll call, please.
Okay, Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge?
Yes.
Kozneski?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
McLafferty?
Yes.
Snigowski?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. Thanks, Charlene. Okay, on the mayor's report, exciting news. We are swearing in a new police officer, Patrick Patla. Charlene, do you want to... Well, before we do that, I need a motion to swear in Officer Patrick Patla. Can I have a motion, please, by the trustees?
So moved.
Move, Snigowski.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Maher, seconded by Trustee Snigowski. Charlene, do you want to take the honors on this, please?
Yes, here.
Officer Patrick Patla, are you out there?
I did see him out there.
Yep.
Okay, we see ya.
Yes, to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Awesome, yes, sir.
Yes.
Right, you're live.
We're right. Could you please raise your right hand? I, Patrick J. Patla.
I, Patrick J. Patla.
Having been appointed as a police officer.
Having been appointed as a police officer.
In the Village of Lamont.
In the Village of Lamont.
Counties of Cook, Will, and DuPage, Illinois.
Counties of Will, Cook, and DuPage, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And Patrick, before we give you a final congratulations, we need a roll call to approve it, just to make it official. Go ahead, Charlene.
Okay, Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge?
Yes.
Kozneski?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
McLafferty?
Yes.
Snigowski?
Yes.
Okay.
Awesome. Officer Patla, we wish you, as a board, nothing but the best. We're excited you're on board. And tell us a little bit about your history. Did you come from Hoffman Estates and have a brief stint at Burr Ridge before finally picking the best town of both of them?
Thank you, sir. Yes. Well, first, I started my career in Mattson, and I did seven years there. And then I took a job offer in Hoffman Estates and did another 21 years there. When I decided I wanted to continue my career after retiring from Hoffman Estates, I applied for several agencies. But to be honest, Lamont was at the top of my list. I'm very familiar with the Village. I love the old history and architecture of the Village. It was one of the ones I was hoping for. And it was taking a little while, and Burr Ridge gave me the job offer, so I did accept Burr Ridge. And then I liked it there. It was a great department. It wasn't an easy decision to start all over again, but I felt it was worth it because this is where I wanted to be.
That's awesome. Well, definitely, you saved the best for last, so.
Thank you, sir.
We wish you nothing but the best. Chief, do you have any other comments?
No, but I think Patrick kind of introduced himself. I was going to introduce him. Patrick's taken the position that Bobby Schmitz retired on January 4th, so he's replacing Bobby. So he started at the beginning of the month. He's on his FTO program. We're thrilled to have him here with his experience. We think he can add to the department. He has three children and 28 years of law enforcement experience. We think that'll be good for us. And Patrick, he became the first officer to ever be sworn in via Zoom meeting, and hopefully will be the last that will ever be part of this remote process. But congratulations, we're glad to have you here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Chief, sorry to take your thunder away. I apologize for that. But no, thanks for the comments. And Patrick, we wish you nothing but the best and welcome aboard.
Thank you. I'm very excited to be here.
Awesome. Great to hear, great to hear.
Thank you.
All right, to wrap up the mayor's report, just a couple things. We'll start off with, of course, it wouldn't be a meeting unless we had a COVID update. I will let Chief or Mike share that input. But before we do that, the only other item I have is, obviously, we're past the holiday season, but we're still lighting up Lamont, specifically the Candy Cane Lane, which is along the canal path on Front Street. We're going to be having this lit up through February. We got a lot of feedback that everyone loves it. Every year, we keep getting more and more input, and we keep getting more traffic. It brings foot traffic to town even during our COVID days. So please, we encourage everyone, get out there, get some pictures before the February season ends. In addition, on Saturday, February 13th, we will have an ice sculpture at the pedestrian bridge landing. They will be carving up a creation decided by the audience that day. So please be sure to stop downtown on Saturday, February 13th. That starts at 5:00 PM for this fun event. Also, sign up to receive our stay informed e-news on our website for any updated information and visit our social media channel. So with that being said, Chief or Mike, do you have anything to add on the... Chief, do you want to start on the COVID?
Yeah, I'll let Mike... Sure, sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll let Mike talk about the phases in the mitigation issues. On the vaccine, Cook County started their 1B phase this morning. And so the folks that are in Phase 1B for vaccinations are essential workers, which includes first responders, healthcare workers that were not included in 1A, grocery store workers, transportation workers. All of those can start going and getting their vaccines in different areas in Cook County right now. In addition to that, anybody over 65 is now considered in 1B. Cook County put up on their website this morning a link to start registering for information about the vaccine, and it generates an individual number that they will then use to bring to their vaccination sites once they have an appointment. They're asking to do vaccines by appointment only. They've... In Cook County, they've initiated several sites to do those vaccines for 1B. ASCO Drugs and Walgreens will be part of the ASCO, about the vaccine distribution. They're also putting some large sites together. The closest one to us is Tinley Park Facility. That'll be a large vaccination site where they anticipate vaccinating 1,000 persons a day. And as the month progresses, they anticipate to get additional vaccine and start opening up additional sites. There's several links. If you go on the IDPH website, there's a link to all of the vaccination providers in the area. You can put in your zip code, and it'll give you a dot map of where those are. We'll have all these links on the Village website. If you also go to the Cook County website, they now have that vaccination data. And then, once you register with your information and it places you in your priority phase, it'll then give you the ability to start registering yourself to schedule an appointment for a vaccine at one of the providers. So I looked just before I came on the, at the meeting, and there's not a lot of appointments that are up there yet. But I anticipate over the next few days that they'll start populating those as they get the vaccine and their process gets a little more ironed out.
Hey, Chief, what's the exact website for people to register? Do you have that on hand?
It's a link from the... Go to the Cook County Department of Public Health website, and then choose the vaccine link there. But the actual HTML we'll put on our website. So if I can just go to the Village website, click on the links for those.
Chief, and Mayor, I have it. It's vaccine.cookcountyil.gov.
Vaccine Cook County? Dot gov, okay, sounds good. Vaccine.cookcountyil.gov.
No, no, no. Vaccine.cookcountyil.gov.
Okay, got it. All right, just checking. All right, thanks, Chief. Mike, do you have anything else to add?
As far as on the mitigation, we are in Phase 4 Tier 1 mitigation. We went from 2 to 1 last week. And what that means is there's, on the food at restaurants, it's 25% of the floor capacity, as well as no more than 25 people in a room. And that also is 25 people in a room as well for meetings. There's some changes, a change in the allowance of retail. So that is because we are under 8% of a positivity rating. And actually, the next level would be going back to Phase 4, which would allow how things were from essentially June until November, when we went into all this mitigation. Restaurants are essentially open, bars are open, meetings are 50. And that, we have to hit 6.5% positivity for three straight days. I just looked, we're at 6.9 right now in Cook County. So if we went down .3 today, so if we, we've been going down quite a bit. Conceivably, we could get there by next week, and that would allow us to back into Phase 4. As far as on a, I should also note, in Phase 4, all sports are allowed again. So that's why high school students and parents are very excited, because that would allow practice and competition, both on a football and basketball level and volleyball. So we're getting there. Hopefully, we're there by next week.
Awesome. Yes, I think everyone would have to second that. And hopefully, we can get down to the 6.5 to get out of Tier 1 and reach that next stage. So hopefully, things are progressing. But thanks, Mike, and thanks, Chief, for the updates. With that being said, we're done with the mayor's mention. Now the clerk's report. Charlene?
Okay, thank you. The first resolution we have passed this evening would be Resolution R-01-21. And this is authorizing the order and purchase of police vehicles.
Okay, need a motion, please?
So moved, McLafferty.
Second, Kittredge.
Okay, motion by Trustee McLafferty, seconded by Trustee Kittredge. Chief, do you want to take this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of our multi-year capital plan, the police department's requesting authorization to purchase four new Ford SUV interceptors. And this would be for the calendar year that begins in May. The capital plan is typically approved throughout the spring. We found out last week that certain heavy-duty Ford trucks, including the police interceptors, they were closing off orders at the end of this month. So we'd be requesting to authorization to put those orders in, obviously, knowing that it's for the 2021 fiscal year and that they would be delivered sometime typically in the summer, as they normally are, using government pricing. We had a bid from Willowbrook Ford of $140,000 for those four vehicles and would recommend the authorization to put the order in for those vehicles.
Okay, thanks, Chief. And obviously, we talked quite a bit about this in our Committee of the Whole meeting. But with that being said, any other questions or comments by the trustees? Okay, roll call, please, Charlene.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge?
Yes.
Kozneski?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
McLafferty?
Yes.
Snigowski?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
The next item passed this evening would be a resolution also. It would be R-02-21. And this is authorizing the purchase of a 2021 Ford F-150 truck.
Okay, need a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved. Kittredge?
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee McLafferty, seconded by Trustee Kittredge. Ralph, you going to take this?
Actually, Ralph is actually on.
In a plow truck right now in town.
Okay.
Chris Smith is going to take his items for him.
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, George. Yes, the next four items are basically similar to like what the chief had said. They're replacement trucks for the, for Public Works. And we discussed this last week at the Committee of the Whole. They're a part of a five-year capital improvement plan. And similar to the police vehicles, that we need to put these trucks on order. I think they're stopped taking orders by the end of next week or the end of this week. So we discussed this at the Committee of the Whole. They are replacements. There are no new vehicles. They are replacements for existing and a part of the capital improvement program, or capital equipment purchases. I do want to say the last two items, the Ford F-600 and the Ford... There's two items that I actually were budgeted in this fiscal year that ends on April 30th. And then there's two of them that are budgeted for fiscal year '22.
Thanks, Chris. And again, just to reemphasize, replacements only. And we talked about this at the Cal. With that being said, any other questions or comments? Okay, can we have a roll call, please, for the F-150 truck?
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge?
Yes.
Kozneski?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
McLafferty?
Yes.
Snigowski?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
The next item passed this evening would be another resolution, R-03-21. And this is authorizing the purchase of a 2021 Monroe Truck Equipment Ford F-600 body with certain specifications and equipment.
Okay, need a motion, please?
So moved, Stapleton.
Second, Maher.
Okay, motion by Trustee Stapleton, seconded by Trustee Maher. Chris, anything else to add on this one?
It's similar to all the other purchases.
Awesome. Okay, any other questions or comments by the trustees? Roll call, please.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge?
Yes.
Kozneski?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
McLafferty?
Yes.
Snigowski?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
The next item would be R-04-21. And this is authorizing the purchase of a 2021 Ford F-600 chassis and cab with certain equipment and specifications.
Okay, need a motion, please?
So moved, Kittredge.
Second, Kozneski.
Okay, motion by Trustee Kittredge, seconded by Trustee Kozneski. Chris, anything else on this?
Nope.
Okay, all right, thanks, Chris. Any questions or comments by the trustees on the F-600 chassis? Roll call, please.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge?
Yes.
Kozneski?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
McLafferty?
Yes.
Snigowski?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
The next item would be R-05-21. And this is authorizing the purchase of a 2021 Ford F-250 truck.
Okay, need a motion, please?
So moved, Maher.
Second, McLafferty.
Okay, we got a motion by Trustee Maher, seconded by Trustee McLafferty. Chris, we all good on this one as well?
Yep, we're all good on this one.
Awesome, thank you, Chris. Any questions or... Thanks. Any questions or comments regarding the F-250 truck? Roll call, please, Charlene.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kittredge?
Yes.
Kozneski?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
McLafferty?
Yes.
Snigowski?
Yes.
That's all I have this evening.
Okay, motion approved. Thanks, Charlene, appreciate it. Okay, next up, Village Attorney Report. Mike, anything to add? I think, I believe, we're going into executive session, but the public meeting, anything else to add?
Nothing other than what I already addressed, Mayor.
Awesome, thanks, Mike. George, Administrator Report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have a couple items under executive session as well. And just wanted to make mention again, I know Mike covered in chief the vaccine rollout plan. And even though things sound promising, there's still going to be several months before the vaccine gets to the general population. So keep updated on our Village website what's happening with board meetings. I mean, we'll continue to do them remotely. We'll start to invite a few more people in and do some hybrid meetings. But again, I think it's working well right now while we get through the end of this pandemic. So more information to come. And also, probably the next Committee of the Whole meeting and Board meeting will have more information on summer events and festivals and things of that nature. We're talking to our neighbors and partners about the Park District, you know, about how to bring those back, to what extent in the summer as the vaccine rolls through the general population. So more information to come, but I just want to make mention on the meetings. We'll continue to do them remotely for a little while, a little while longer. That is all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, George. Any board reports, trustees? Okay, any staff reports, Chief or Chris?
In addition. Already went through. Is anything more, Chief, from the vaccination plan?
Okay, all right, all right. Any unfinished or new business?
You know, and I did, there's one item on the agenda, but I thought I'd just, you know, put them together in our audience participation portion. I know one resident wants to speak, and I have another hand up. But, Mr. Mayor, if I could actually just open up audience participation and go through the program again here, because it's been a few weeks at least. We're going to use, you know, Zoom razor-hand feature if anyone has any comments. And I will call you up. I do know, I'll give you the floor first. Mr. Rich Wilk lives out in Rolling Meadows, and he has to speak to the board on an issue that he's concerned about, about the tollway. I told him I'd give him some time here, and if, well, we don't have a whole lot of time. If more conversation and discussion is needed, we could forward this to a committee meeting for more of a discussion, but, and then I'll open up. I have one other hand here after Mr. Wilk, but he asked first. So, Rich, I'm going to unmute you here and... Hold on just a second here, unless you can... Oh, I think you're... Are you unmuted? There you go.
I just did, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Wilk.
Can I share the screen with a quick PowerPoint and probably?
Yeah, I can. Let me just stop my share and then, you can, let me just stop my share, and you can grab. Can you grab the screen?
Actually, it disappeared. I'm not really sure why. Oh, there it is, okay.
We got you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Village Board, Chief, appreciate the time. I'll make this as quick as I can. Obviously, my problem with the tollway is noise pollution. Started speaking with George and the mayor in November of 2019. We had a meeting with a couple tollway representatives in January. And many of the residents, in fact, all the residents that I've spoke to in Mayfair Estates and some of the other ones in the subdivision just north of 127th have the same concerns. So I'll just get through this. So what's the tollway authority? So I did some research. You know, it's not, it's not a local or state governing body. It's an administrative agency of the State of Illinois. It is privately funded through toll collections. It receives no state, municipal, or federal tax dollars. It has no governing authority except to build, approve roadways, collect tolls to support the operations of the tollway. And it derives its authority to conduct roadway business through the Toll Highway Act. This grants the agency authority to provide construction, operation, and maintenance of the toll system highways in Illinois. So our Village of Lamont Municipal Governing Body derives its authority as a governing body through state statute. It is empowered as a governing body to enforce Illinois criminal statutes as well as municipal code. This includes the enforcement of noise pollution, which is identified in this statute, which states pollution means any form of environmental pollution, including but not limited to water, air, solid waste, thermal radiation, or noise pollution, as determined by the various standards prescribed by the state or federal government. Illinois EPA Law and Standards on Noise. Noise pollution is enforced by state, county, and municipal enforcement. Illinois statute is presented. No person shall admit beyond the boundary of his property any noise that unreasonably interferes with the enjoyment of life or with any lawful business or activity, so as to violate any regulation or standard adopted by the IPA Board in this act. So just some weighted sound levels, and this will get to a point at the end. I did some recordings with a decibel meter, a certified decibel meter, just to kind of show you what we, along the tollway, deal with on a daily basis, 24 hours a day. Normal residents, inside is about 48 to 50 decibels. A small office is a little over 50 decibels, a large store about 60. over 50 decibels, a large store about 60, and then you come into a vacuum cleaner, uh, 70, a freight train at 100 feet, between 70, 80 decibels. I bring those into light because the Lamont Municipal Code, as stated, no operation or activity shall cause or create noise in excess of the sound levels listed in Table 1714, which I posted a copy of. In a residential district, according to municipal code and state statute, it should be 55 decibels. The tollway, um, this is their noise abatement criteria, and, and we met and had many discussions and, and documents back and forth about noise and sound walls and things like that. But their self-imposed, uh, acceptable noise levels on tollway policy, um, is 67. That's 12 decibels above the standard municipal code and statute with the I E P A. And how the tollway is allowed to establish, um, what a policy is when they're not even a governing body. And, and I'll just give you a quick, uh, quick video here, I think you can hear it. I wanted to be in person in the room, turn the volume up and bring a meter to show you actually what 73 and 74 decibels is, um, so you can appreciate what we listen to on a daily basis. This is constant noise. Um, it will peak when certain, and this is during September, uh, rush hours at night, um, rush hours in the morning, midday. Um, these are constant noise, uh, variables, and, uh, it doesn't really appreciate until you're standing there trying to have a, a human conversation. Um...
And Rich, we're not getting this, hey, Rich, we're, uh, it must be, it might be a setting, we're not getting the sound or, uh, but I, I think we get your overall point.
Yeah, you get the gist. Um, so my question's at the village board, how does a private entity, the Illinois tollway dictate its own policy and standards that a governing body Village of Lamont has to adhere to? How does its self-made noise abatement policy created by the tollway set their own levels of noise pollution, which are less restrictive than Illinois law? How does any non-governing body create their own policies and supersede Illinois criminal statute? And how does the tollway supersede municipal code and ordinance by creating their own noise levels? So I FOIA'd the tollway, um, as per our discussions during all the emails and conversations. Initially, Mr. Brian Wagner, who was a representative from the tollway, who met with us, uh, the mayor, George, myself, Brian Wagner, and Josh Snabburg, who is the, uh, tollway, uh, landscape specialist. Um, Brian Wagner had stated to me that 99.3% of all sound walls on the tollway are on tollway property. Um, later on in our conversations, uh, he would not put that in writing for us. So I FOIA'd the tollway, and I, based on multiple back and forth, um, they have four smaller sound walls that are on municipal property. Uh, two were done in 1999, two in 2007, I'm sorry, one in 2007, one in 2008, and I have the, all those documents if, if you'd like me to send them. So this tollway stated in their FOIA response, because I asked, can you give me the amount of, and the amount of roadway and what is maintained by the tollway as far as sound walls? Their response said they could not provide me that amount of noise abatement walls, which are on their property and maintained by the tollway, because they didn't keep those records, uh, which I thought was certainly a scapegoat, because how do you know what you have, what to repair, what the costs are? There's permits, there's access. I mean, all of these documents have to go through to get a wall built, how they not know what they have. So it's kind of a shell game. I think they're dodging the 99.3% number that I was given originally. Bottom line, the, the noise from this tollway is a result of engineering from 35 or 30-plus years ago, which failed to meet the projected standards of this roadway. Uh, the tollway hides behind a shell game of self-imposed noise policy, and, and my ask to the board is need to demand the tollway to order another noise study and build a noise abatement wall to comply with state law with no cost to the village, or enforce criminal complaints, which all of my neighbors are willing to file. I mean, noise pollution's noise pollution, whether it is my neighbor to the, to the south or to the north, a fence line's a fence line, and, uh, they can't hide behind tollway policy. So I, I'm just throwing these items up there because I, I think they're important. Um, the tollway seems to be the, the big bull in the china shop, and, uh, I don't think a governing body should bow to whatever they say. And that's kind of my gist at this point. Um, I'd really like to, uh, continue on, I know you're busy, and if, if you want to send it to committee, um, that's fine, I would, uh, I would certainly entertain going to these meetings and getting all my neighbors. Some of the neighbors have gone through and signed petitions and things like that, and it's, uh, you know, basically, noise, it's illegal. Noise is a safety issue for residents, children, uh, those with disabilities and first responders, because I'll tell you, it gets so loud.
Tellment.
Hello?
Yeah, thanks, Rich, appreciate it.
Just a quick thing, it gets so loud, I mean, you can't even have, if a muller's yelling to her kid, or, uh, somebody's backing out of a driveway, or there's a kid on a bike, I've seen it, and i- it's, it's really disturbing that they're allowed to do this. And, and the, the money, uh, the amount that they talked about, $900,000, I mean, uh, we have two huge berms here as it is, they'd have to breed, uh, bridge between the two berms, and as the, as Mr. Wagner said, noise is line of sight. I mean, w- we're not needing 20-foot walls here. Uh, it seems like somewhat of a simple fix, I've had some noise solution people out here, a- and they're thinking between eight and 10 feet of a wooden type of fence, so I think the projection of $900,000 to construct the wall all the way from 127 is a little, little bit absurd.
Rich, tha- thanks again, um, ve- very thorough and, and obviously you've done a ton of homework and work on this, and, you know, as a board, we, we appreciate, um, you know, your input and thoroughness with that. Um, with, with that being said, George, do you want to just quickly maybe just give a, you know, where we are at? I mean, obviously, we're dealing with a, you know, a, a government agency, either it be, you know, is it, you know, something that, that is, you know, an admin agency only, or is it a non-governing authority? Obviously, that's well beyond my scope, Rich, um, but, you know, they are, uh, uh, obviously a, a major agency within the, the, the state. Do you want to just kind of give a quick background of our dealings with them? Because we did address this issue with them, and obviously, as Rich mentioned, we all met together with, uh, Mr. Wagner.
Well, and Rich, you're not the, obviously, you're not the first, so that, we've been dealing with some of these issues, um, you know, in Briar Cliff and Rolling Meadows for, uh, several years, going into decades probably, and, and the tollway has been responsive to come out and do studies, and Mr. Wagner, as you mentioned, came out recently, but, uh, they've done noise studies, and they've, uh, the last few years, uh, going back probably the most recent four or five years ago, and then they updated them a couple of years ago, and, and you're right, I mean, they, they come out, they place the transponders that, um, a- and they, they have their own policies, uh, as their governing structure and, um, allows them to have, and, um, and they, they do identify two or three areas, um, you know, along the corridor that could benefit from noise mitigation. Now, could benefit from noise mitigation doesn't mean that, that they will in fact install mitigation, uh, actions, devices, uh, structures, just means they could benefit them, and then they further study it. Um, they do have their own formulas and policies, as you mentioned, that says, while a, an area could benefit from mitigation, um, you know, it has to, uh, reach a threshold in which their, their dollars of investment would, um, would lead to an improvement that would actually mitigate the noise, that would justify that investment, I mean, in a, in a roundabout way. So a lot of times what they'll do and, is they'll say, um, we won't install a new wall, we won't install a new berm, but we'll give a, a certain amount of money towards the project, and that's what we've seen in, in Briar Cliff, uh, where the, the tollway has offered to spend up to $409,000 on, on mitigation measures as long as the, um, mitigation measure meets their criteria, and oftentimes, that improvement costs more than the amount of money they're willing to give. And, um, you know, with, with regard to Briar Cliff, they've done a great job with, uh, organizing, they have a very formal HOA, um, they've met with legislators, they've met with, uh, the village, they've met with the tollway, and they were able to get funding. Now, even in that case, uh, the, the cost of the wall is gonna be significantly more than what the tollway's willing to give. So then it comes down to the village, or the HOA, or the, or the, uh, you know, residents, some other entity has to pitch in and cover that delta in costs, and, um, you know, and that, that really becomes the issue. And, and this issue where they came out a couple times, and the mayor and I were out there in the freezing cold, and we heard it, uh, they were willing to offer some support, um, but not the full amount to have mitigation, so. That's, they have been responsive, but they're not willing to fund a complete improvement that's gonna mitigate the noise to their satisfactory level, so, um, you know, as for the other sides of, of, I do get, I also have people in town who ask us to. Issue citations to Amtrak, you know, for, because they, there is noise pollution there, and I don't know, and it'd be something for Mike, maybe at a, at a future workshop, to what level we have authority to issue a citation against a, an entity like the tollway or. Amtrak. So that's just my, my two cents on it, Mr. Mayor, if anybody else has any comment.
Uh, any other questions or comments by the trustees? Okay. Well, Rich, uh, you know, uh, thanks again for your, for your input and the thoroughness. I mean, Mike, as, as our village attorney, um, any homework we can do, you know, as far as the admin agencies or the ability to, to issue, you know, um, noise pollution, and any thoughts on that, or do we have to do some homework on that, Mike?
I, I have to do a little bit of, uh, research on that, Mayor, and then I'd be happy to address it at a committee meeting.
Yeah, trustee Snigowski did have his hand up, I did not see it.
Okay, go, go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, I just, I'd like to ask, uh, two things. One, uh, if Rich would, uh, send on that presentation he made and whatever information he has, at least, uh, George to you, so that we can get a copy of it somehow, uh, electronically would be best, uh, but I don't know how much there is, and if it is in electronic format already, if it is, that'd be easier. Um, and if it's not, then, uh, somehow maybe we can get, depending on how much there is scanned in, so we can take a look at it. Um, obviously, he's done a lot of homework on this with, with his people, but, uh, we're gonna need some legal advice on this, as well as, uh, there is some other historical data that I'm familiar with, with the tollway, uh, in a similar situation up north. I don't remember exactly where it was, but it was up in Northbrook, somewhere in that area along 294, and ultimately, um, there was some kind of mitigation done. I don't know if it was a sound wall, or if they came in and, uh, there's some surface tech training that can be done with grinders that, um, are used also to plane off bumps, uh, on concrete pavements, they say, they have some, there's techniques, they're called whispercrete, there's different things, uh, that can be brought in to kind of alleviate some of that. Uh, so I do know some about it, but I need to see what the information is he has. Um, I can tell you, just from my own background, uh, a few years back, there was a, um, how would I put it? There was a feud, let me put it that way, between the asphalt industry and the concrete industry, asphalt industry contending that they could build quieter pavements, and at that time, I can tell you that the decibel levels of regular average roads, uh, between those two new products was between 95 and about 115 decibels. So how that relates and how they work around the 67, how, all these things are, uh, based on how far away you are from it, uh, what is the level of reach over the top of the wall, but Rich would be familiar with all those numbers. I just don't know how they apply here. Uh, the backyards there, I would guess, are at least 100 feet away. Again, Rich would know that. Um, but, so, so it's not just the number, but it's the number relevant to the distance. And then the other part of that problem is, is that the tollway, as does the state, as does the railroad, they own those properties and they are not a product of the village, uh, and Mike, he could, he could fill us in more on that, but very similar to how easements are granted along utility right-of-ways, uh, such as Commonwealth Edison. Those are not our properties, they're owned by other people. Those other people in this case would be the tollway. And I understand the frustration about the agency. So, um, once we get all that, then, I, I don't, I see this as a mountain, not a snap your finger, let's get it done. That's not gonna happen, because what it's gonna involve is getting to your representatives, your state representatives, it's a big political battle, it always is, and maybe you've already been involved and see that, uh, but that's where we need to go. We need to get state representatives to take this down to Springfield and do that work for you. Um, obviously, the better news you have at this particular time is that, uh, with, with, uh, basically with the Democrats controlling Springfield, typically, the tollway is a, is a Republican group, uh, so maybe there's some help there right now in Springfield, I don't know, but that's the political makeup that, that is out there right now. So, Rich, I don't know if any of that helped you, but I, I'm sympathetic to what it is you're bringing. I'd be glad to work with our group and see what we can do, but we certainly need more information, and we need to know what you've already done, so we don't duplicate the effort.
For sure, I can provide, uh, everything I have. If I can have a point of contact for the committee, uh, then I can provide that, uh, all the emails, um, the meetings, um, my readings, um, and again, it's a controlled access, it's not a state highway, um, which is basically my angle to, to put it on them as a criminal statute, uh, to cut to the chase, because all this legislative stuff to go to Springfield, um, I'll be retired and living in Florida by that point, so, um, but it's wrong.
Well, it took them 20 years to build the road, so it may take 20 more to get the sound wall up, but, uh, that's how it works.
We'll see if the neighbors start filing, uh, noise complaints, and if that'll speed the process, so.
Yeah.
And we will file with, with the Illinois tollway, state police, include and Lamont, uh, because it is a fence line property issue, so.
Yep.
That's probably the angle that most people will take, but I do appreciate all the effort, and if you can give me a point of contact to send all this to, so I have a little stop shop, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, to George, our village administrator. And then what I will do is I'll try to find out if I can, uh, come up with what was done along 294. I know they led a contract, but I don't remember if it was done by a private entity, or if the tollway itself did the work, or homeowners did, I don't know who did it. I just know there was something done, I know there was a big battle, that was about 15 years ago, and, uh, it probably took five years for it to happen. This one, we've been fighting almost as long now, so. Um, but get it to George, and then we'll go from there, and, uh, George, I'd advise that this, if you want to do more on it, then it's something we should do at committee of the whole.
And I gotta get some information from, from Mike, and, um, you know, and the legalities of it, and we can.
We should do it at the committee at a whole meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
I, um, anybody, I did have one other hand up, it might be on the same issue, but anybody else from the board, or? Um, Catherine Darnstat?
I'm gonna. Yes, I'm still here, thank you.
Oh, go ahead, you're up, you're up.
All right, perfect, so hello, everyone, and thank you for your time. Hopefully, um, you're enjoying the snowstorm. I know that makes, uh, the decorations you have up in Lamont look extra good, um, for the last week or so. Um, so my name is Catherine Darnstat, and I'm the owner of Boombox LLC. We are a minority-owned woman, uh, a minority woman-owned shipping container fabrication company based in Chicago, and we have recently and regrettably had to file a lien against Lamont Quarries Holdings LLC, more commonly known as The Forge. This lien is due to continued non-payment for services rendered and delivered on both the privately-owned land and municipal-owned land that the adventure park sit on, adventure park does sit on. Despite months of attempted communication outreach by our attorney in various formats to resolve amicably, we continue to have no response. Shockingly, we found that we are not the only firm that has encountered this communication non-payment issue, and there is a lien already in place against them. Ours filed January 6th would be the 2nd. So it seems more simply, we have a case of a billionaire that doesn't pay his bills. While we hope to have a resolution to this non-payment issue, we will continue to pursue all legal actions available to us, including and not limited to filing a lien against the Village of Lamont on land owned by the municipality that also contains our equipment. the village of Lamont on land owned by the municipality that also contains our equipment. Per the review of the ordinance authorizing licensed use of the land, this seems within our right and therefore consider this statement notice of intent to do so. Thank you for your time and please let me know if you have any questions. I'm happy to forward the statement and any other information you request to George as I do have his email as well.
Thanks, Catherine. Yeah, and if you could do that, you know, and what, you know, if you can give more particulars to George, you know, regarding the, you know, the specifics of the issue, we'll take a look at that as well.
All right, I will, yeah, I could definitely email him on that. And then I saw this was an agenda item for Wednesday's meeting, so we will, I'm sure all of us will be there on that date included to hear what the status would be because that'll be the first time we'll hear any update on what the status of our payment will be.
Okay, thank you, Catherine, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Can you give us, can we get a ballpark amount of what, what is the outstanding amount?
On ours, we filed a lien for 120,000. The other one that's in place that we saw was, I think, 54,000?
All right, thanks, Catherine.
And Catherine, if you, I probably have your information. I think we talked a little while ago about it, but give me, you can.
I don't know who's talking, sorry.
This is George, sorry.
Oh, thanks, George.
The camera's kind of zoomed out, but in your email, get your, your contact information and we'll try to see what we can do to, to help out if we can.
All right, yeah, no, no problem. I mean, I haven't had an issue dealing with the village to date. I mean, you all have been very kind and, you know, thoughtful about this. I mean, it's just at some point, you keep following the pathway going down, you know, and it leads, it leads here when you have an agreement like the, the unique agreement you guys have in place. But I'll email that all over, George, to you.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other?
Anybody else have their, I don't see any hands, I'll give you another second here. I think we're good to close public comment.
Okay, great. All right, like we mentioned, we will be going into executive session. Need a motion to discuss under chapter 5 ILCS of the Open Meetings Act, litigations pending and imminent, section 2C11. Need a motion, please.
Motion, McLaFerty?
And then, Mr. Mayor, there are two other items that I added before, if you want to just.
Okay, we also have, so we have 2C11 in addition. We have real estate purchase 2C5 as well as real estate setting price for sale 2C6. So three items to be discussed in executive session. Just a heads up, we will not be making any decisions after executive session. We will just be closing the meeting. So I know sometimes people want to come back into the open, into the public meetings just to see if a decision is made, but no, no decisions will be made publicly afterwards. So with that being said, did we get a?
Second.
Go move.
Okay, motion by trustee McLaFerty, seconded by trustee Snagowski, I think I heard. Roll call, please.
Okay, Snagowski?
Yes.
Stapleton?
Yes.
Kit Ridge?
Yes.
Bozesski?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
McLaFerty?
Yes.
That's it.
Okay, motion approved. Again, want to thank everyone for joining us tonight. We will be, everyone that is not a trustee will be, you'll be turning them off, so our public meeting is.
Other than the village board, the mayor, village attorney and myself, you can leave the meeting now. If not, I'll put you in the waiting room, but there will be no action at the end of the meeting.